With you, pet stores came up a lot in the surveys. And so you do your part, you know, help us, you know, find the pet store. The pet stores that you go to that are not on the island, they have to take a subway or a tram to, you know, go knock on their door and say, you know, uh, you know, how about 1,200 square feet I was on the island? Uh, I bet you I can get better than $50 because I'm a friend of David Kramer's. So, you know, do your part and, um, you know, in my jigsaw puzzle concept, one of those 12 stores is a pet store.
Janet Paul wanted to ask about 504 Main Street, which has been touched on, but I'm sure you'd like to expand on that.
I'm Janet Paul. I'm the executive director of the Roosevelt Island Community Literary Association. Both of you who worked here thirty years ago know that RIFLA was founded in order to create a volunteer library, which operated for many years in the basement of Westview. And it was a very happy day when the agreement was negotiated between the New York Public Library and RIFLA, and the space was located on Main Street. And so the books came out of the basement and were marched in a long parade down Main Street and located in the center of town. And we're so excited at RIFLA and here in the community to know, after my conversation with Andrew Jackson yesterday and your comments today, that you have in mind using the first floor of 504 Main Street as a new and happy home for a state-of-the-art wheelchair-accessible library. That will be an opening gateway to our remodelled Main Street corridor. Thank you. Now, of course, we all know what we do in the library. We surf the internet and we do research and we do our homework after school. And we have lapsid read aloud where people can bring their young children to be exposed to the sound and music of reading. And so we're very excited to know that more space will become available on the first floor of 504. But my question is, the second floor of 504, what possibly could be compatible with the quiet and study and small group meetings that are going to be held on the first floor of our library? Now, I mentioned to Andrew Jackson that I didn't think a dance studio, not the Main Street Theater and Dance Alliance wants to move, but I didn't think that a dance studio was the appropriate new tenant. And he agreed that bowling alley was a bad idea as well. Um, and so I would like to know what is going to be your view for a few desirable possible tenants for the second floor of 504 Main Street? Many in our community think that we would like to have a community access room where we could have meetings and gatherings. As it is now, most of our community meetings are held occasionally here, often in the basement of this building. And so we are desirous of a more accommodated space and want to hear your vision of what will be appropriate use of the second floor of 504. Thank you very much.
A three-community room is not on my list currently. Um, when we first started thinking about it, actually I had an idea of green desk space. You know, in the new economy with so many freelancers and people working from their homes, the idea of a bullpen slash private offices, executive suite, I thought would be great here, where you could rent a cubicle, you could rent a private office, you could, um, pay extra to serve a conference room. You know, that's sort of where I started. Then we got approached by the child school and they, their interest in the space. We've been approached by the Islamic society because they don't have a place of worship. Um, I thought that an obvious solution for gallery Reva, and I was amused when I saw the banner saying "street level," is that, is that to have a wheelchair accessible second floor space, second floor space is less valuable than first floor space. Art galleries are on upper floors all over the world because art galleries typically don't pay for...
Running aside, folks, that's what we're here for.
Uh, galleries typically don't have the same economics to pay for around retail space. And folks, that's a reality. Um, so we have a lot of ideas for 504. And nothing is etched in stone, and we don't have a deal with the library yet, but, you know, certainly 504 is more than officey, non-profity type space. I mean, second floor is obviously not going to be resale. Um, and so, you know, some, some version of what I just said. Uh, what about the youth center that's now in 504? The part of 504 that's youth center is not part of our scope.
We've been here just about two hours, and I'm thinking that if we take questions until a quarter to ten, we've just about exhausted the subject. So I think we're going to be pretty close to covering the ground. The next question is asked, have you considered incorporating a public restroom?
Um, I haven't, but I'm always interested in profit sense. Oh, that was a joke, come on. Everything's nothing so stern, huh? I haven't thought about it at all. Look at this, we mentioned public restroom, but there's a dash to the exits. Um, we're adults, we can talk about these matters. Um, I haven't thought about it, um, happy to think about it.
Vicky Farnham has asked me to read her questions, and I will. Uh, the first is, will the kiosks on Main Street be removed? If so, what will replace them? Is that what they make for a room?
A little bit. You're talking about those sort of concrete cylindrical, that's, you know, you know, it's not in, it's not part of our vision. Our vision is sort of more sleek, more controlled, um, and, you know, part of what Katie and Jonathan were working on are, you know, the you are here kiosk and trying to come up with a better way of allowing people to post, you know, without letting it get out of control, without getting out of control where everybody's lost camp from four years ago, or that concert from six months ago, and, you know, four years of Scotch tape just sort of build up. So we've been thinking about what to do with it. And, you know, Jonathan has some very ambitious, fantastic ideas for the, for the church plaza, which A, not only is not in our purview, where RIAU just started repaving. And when, when Jonathan saw they were repaving, he was like, oh, if they just waited, we could have just told them where like, you know, some electrical outlets or some, where some soil could go. So, you know, we have a long-term ground base of the retail space, 30 years. So, you know, we want this to be fabulous and we're going to be coming up with ideas every day. So, um, whether it's the kiosks or the plaza, it's all stuff that's, that's married.
You know, you hit it right on the head with those kiosks. For a long time, no one knew when to put things up because no one would be hearing when they were going to come down. RIRA has worked with RIAU to codify that so that on 1st and 15th of every month, everything comes down. And when people know that, it means that they can time their signage to that schedule. Um, but one of the, one of the eccentricities of the village is that we do have someplace to put signage. One of the reasons this room is so filled this evening is that Sheri and I were putting two dozen signs up all over this island earlier today. So it's a good thing to keep in mind. Vicky's second question. Many of the stores are in need of structural repair and in desperate need of air conditioning. Is there any plan to help repair damaged stores?
Uh, you know, eventually over time, every store, yes. I don't know, I would quibble with, I think there are structural issues, there are HVAC issues, there are cosmetic issues, typically they're not structural issues. If they are structural issues, then legally it becomes the responsibility of the building. So if it's in River Cross or I House or Westview or Eastwood, it would be a building issue if it's a structural issue. Typically, it's not a structural issue. Um, what we're going to do with each vacant space is, you know, really rev it up and, you know, have a whole build out. And for the existing spaces, depending upon how much time is left in the lease and what's going on, we really take it on a case-by-case basis. Because in reality, once a landlord signs a lease with a tenant, all the interior tenant improvements are the responsibility of the tenant. So it's atypical, irregular that a landlord would come in to do an improvement to a tenant's face. That's the tenant's job. Um, and what we're doing, what we can do as landlord is enforce the lease so that when we see five-year-old Scotch tape on the storefronts, or storefronts that happen to be washed in seven years, that's the kind of things that we can say. We can point to pieces, parts of the lease and say, you really have to improve this and enhance this. Um, but in terms of the actual build out of the spaces, that really is the tenant's, tenant's responsibility. And interestingly, some of our leases say, this shall be a first-class use. And so to us, that's a great hammer. So we can point out various things in the, in the space and say, the lights around, the carpet's shabby, the ceiling tiles are disgusting, that is not a first-place use, replace them now or we'll consider you into default of the lease. Um, and that's how we're going to enforce the lease and improve the appeal of some of these spaces.
Here's an interesting question. Given the, the build-out of retail on Main Street, how will all the delivery trucks be handled?
You know, that's a great question. Um, you know, when we designed Riverwalk, you know, we, we knew that there were issues with, with Main Street. And, you know, to some extent, we can have to muddle through it, you know? There was a time when there weren't 12 vacancies on Main Street. When all of the stores that have since gone out of business were in business, there were very few vacancies and there were a lot more stores operating. So, you know, in, in, in the retail quarter who has passed, there was a world where there were plenty of tenants and there were deliveries and there were trucks. And everybody got through it, and the same thing will happen again. Um, and if there were going to be issues, there are going to be headaches, and we're going to figure it out with RIRA and RIAU and the tenants.
Now, I have a problem here. The next question is from Sheri Helsing, and I don't dare speak for her. Sir.
Um, first of all, thank you, David, for coming to the community with your group of people and talking to us, some, in, in, sometimes in maybe too much detail for us at this moment, at this point. I think a lot of us are really more interested in the actual fact of what, what we're going to be seeing on the island. Um, a couple of things come to mind for me when you were talking about franchises. I don't know if Ben &amp; Jerry's is considered a franchise, but I would love to see a Ben &amp; Jerry's. I want, and Matthew keeps complaining, as all of you probably have heard into this by now, he wants an ice cream cone on the island, and at least one. So that's one thing. I know that Ben &amp; Jerry's, I know that the guys don't own it anymore, but, um, I know they have a, a history of hiring people from the community, wherever they have their stores. We have a lot of dumb men and women who could really use some employment, which, of course, all over the country this is happening. Um, my dream would be to see Christie's disappear and get a mini Fairway, something of a Fairway. I will tell you that I go into the city about once a week, once or twice a week, and I'm usually on the Upper West Side, and I haul my groceries from Fairway and sometimes Trader Joe's. And by the time I get home, I look like I'm about 85 years old because everything is so heavy. And I just barely shop at Christie's. I buy the absolute bare minimum of what I need and it kills me. The milk spoils before due date, and it just kills me. Anyway, um, that's basically what I'm looking for, and I think that everybody here would love to see Christie's go. I don't care.
I just want to say one thing, which is that, you know, sometimes you give direction to the consultants and you don't always get what you want. And I told Jonathan and Katie for our draft, for our, for our signage, I said I wanted to say Matt's Ice Cream. But they forgot the Matt. Ice Cream. But I want to, I want to let you know that Matt's Ice Cream was like the, the fake store we had in mind. Sample.
There was one other thing that just came into my mind. Um, I liked some of the ideas about the walk, the arcade area. I really agree though that there has to be some kind of cover, there has to be some kind of glass, even if it's, I don't know, if it's half, half glass or if it's full glass and you move some of the partitions, something. Because I know in really, really bad cold or really windy or intensely rainy days, I live in Westview and I would cross the street to walk under that arcade. So I think that a lot of us really don't want that completely, we don't want that cover removed. I agree that, you know, the planters and that, but whatever, I can't remember what that's called, that area where it's kind of angled, that could probably go, and benches there, comfortable benches, whatever. But I think that that, we need to have some kind of cover or someplace to walk out of the elements.
Francine Land of Island House, would you like to speak for yourself or shall I read your question? Francine says, I would love to see a shared office hub for small businesses and freelancers on the island. It could serve as a wonderful service, sharing and networking for a group of people that often work alone. Let's talk about it. Let's hope. Well, this has been touched on, perhaps you would just want to expand on it slightly. Uh, how does your vision for the future include the serving of existing institutions? The theater, the gallery, the schools, the churches, and the new tech? That's a good question. The new tech campus, whatever college wins. How are the storefronts part of what makes Roosevelt Island unique? This is from David Callowski. Uh, that's one question that hasn't come up, is the, is the question of the 10 acres that's Goldwater. Uh, we of the community have been meeting with Stanford and Cornell quite a bit. We had lunch with the president of Stanford yesterday, and it seems to be a two-door race at the moment. How, any comments?
Uh, not really. I mean, from a retail standpoint, it'll, it'll only help to have PhDs and faculty walking around, it'll help the retail. I think it's going to be fantastic for the island. I read the same articles you do, and, you know, whether it's Stanford or Cornell who comes here, it's going to be great. And from a retail standpoint, it's, uh, um, you know, it's, it's many years off, so by the time they come, I hope our retail corridor is doing great and will be, you know, patronized by all of them and visitors and the guests and the brotherhood.
Can you talk a bit about potential end dates for the various phases of this project?
Um, I think I sort of touched on that. I mean, we're sort of making our way through the design. Uh, we're actually thinking of taking a piece of the arcade where the old florist is and doing a sample. Because, you know, you come up with ideas and you look at renderings, but there's nothing like seeing something before you do it everywhere. Um, so that's sort of the next phase is finalizing the design, you know, because the next phase is, okay, well, if we're going with sort of the warm wood slapped ceiling, what's the, what's the spec? What's the material? What specific lighting fixture are we talking about? You know, we want to hide the electrical conduit so you don't see the black channels. Um, so this is, you know, this very sophisticated, detailed design construction. So we may do it for a bet, and we may do it for a bet in the next couple of months, 60, 90 days. I'm looking for some guidance here. And at the same time, we're going to be signing up tenants, and they sort of work hand-in-hand because when we sign up a tenant, we want to say, here are our signage guidelines. Um, so, you know, the timing is the same. We hope to be signing leases by the end of the year and having new stores in the spring. And I'd really like to have all 12 spaces humming in the next 12 to 18 months.
We're winding down now, and I'd like to give an opportunity to anyone who has heard issues that piqued questions for them to come up through these last five minutes and make the last question.
Now, this will come as no surprise to many who know me. If you're going to have a state-of-the-art wheelchair-friendly facility, could you do something for those of us who are hard of hearing? I don't know whether you know anything about looking a room so that people who are hearing it, you're not, aren't seeing recognition. Okay. Would you consider consulting with somebody, some of the tech people who know about things that can be done in the 21st century, to make it possible for people who have significant hearing loss to take part in the community? What? I'm Sharon Berman. I've lived in Island House since the beginning, okay? So I'm not getting any response from you. Do you have any idea what I'm talking about?
Um, you know, let's talk after meetings. There are, I mean, you know, we're, we're sort of in the visual business, so it's a little less focused on hearing, but if there are things that we can do to be more accommodating, we don't have to have a conversation right now. Uh, you know, of course, we're concerned.
Okay, one more question. Do you all know, do people know that unless they change their mind, in that case, I'm going to kill myself, that Whole Foods is going to open next year at 57th and Second Avenue? Yeah. Okay? And I hope you take that into consideration. Because a lot of us will never shop at Christie's again.
Tell us who you are.
I'm on the Good Baby, and I... Can you, oh, you can't hear me? Okay. Uh, and I'm sort of playing the seat for Reva, and it's really close to our heart, and I have met with Mr. Kramer privately, and I am sure that we will be able to keep this space at 527 Main Street. Reva has to be on the street, not on the second floor. But it's a must. But the other thing I wanted to discuss with you, uh, because I feel like you...
Let me stop right there. Explain to me why, when there are art galleries on upper floors all over Chelsea, Soho, and the rest of the world, explain...
We are not Chelsea.
I'm asking, Arlene, if Reva is a destination, if Reva has a special place in the community, explain to me why it can't be on the second floor?
Okay. Reva can't be on the second floor because it does have a destination, and its destination is at 527 Main Street. Because serendipitously, people walk by, see the wonderful things in the window and stuff, and walk in. They will not see them up on the second floor at all, at all. And also, um, I think the second floor would never accommodate what we need for all the other activities we have. Uh, we have, very often, we have about 50 to 100 people coming to wear our things. But that's, I mean, I, I...
I'm sorry. No matter.
Yeah. And I'm sure, I mean... Okay.
Let me ask you a question. How many of the folks standing here now want to talk about Reva Gallery? Here's what we're going to do. Choose one of your number to speak because that would be our last speaker. Choose one amongst yourselves, and you will follow... And a town meeting has a finite time. Choose one person to follow our name, and we will end that interview.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kramer, I have been, um, I have been so, I have been so interested in this whole conversation about our Main Street. Our Main Street evidently turned off your planet. You made our Main Street the delivery entrance to Riverwalk. So you people, I mean, I have met people on the, and I have been telling the town, I tell, they said I have to walk down Main Street. They said I'm, I'm in. So I was, I was wondering how you were going to get, how you're going to get Reva and Riverwalk to please come to Main Street if you needed to summarize it.
I tell you what, everybody, since... I tell, I tell you what, shh. Why don't we have this woman, Arlene Hill, just step away now, Arlene. Uh, the woman with the mic will be the last question because we said we would end it at 9:45, but I will stay here and everybody can go home by one and maybe make points to me. I'm happy to talk to you after, after the photo meeting rings up.
It occurs to me that not a single person over 30 has had a chance to speak, and I have a sneaking suspicion you're over 30. There you go. You got to be last here.
Thank you. I'm a fairly new resident to Roosevelt Island. I've been here about a year. I'm from Canada. I come from a tiny community just east of Toronto, a community that had a Main Street every bit as ugly as yours. And it has, um, seriously, all right, it has been completely refurbished. It has beautiful Victorian storefronts. It has, um, uh, individual, uh, like it's like an artisan community. It has, excuse me, I'm just letting you know what your future could be here, which I would love to see. Um, this community, I'm thinking, we're thinking a little bit too small scale in terms of just thinking about the people on Roosevelt Island. This tiny community there now draws a huge number of people from Toronto because it is so unique. The storefronts, the beauty, they market for little things like sleigh rides, all kinds of musical activities. It has now become a place to go with your family, a place to experience what you call USA downtown Main Street shopping. It's a delightful place. People come there on Thanksgiving, they come at Christmas just to be there because it's a unique place. I would like to see Roosevelt Island become that. I would like to be here for a long time. Uh, at first, I was very attracted to what you said about the marine aspects, but I understand here on the East Coast that perhaps marine is not unique. But I, I like the idea, the island's almost like a boat shape. You were talking about port windows, the, the benches. Um, I would, I would rather see something more like a marine light there, something a little more creative. If you're going to go with a theme, I'm not suggesting kitschy... Like I say, visually, I'm feeling, I just want to wind up with this, and that is, just visually, it is still feeling quite sterile. I love the idea of the trees around the community center, but it is still feeling very modern and very sterile, which I see in direct contrast with what you described as Main Street USA. That's not a sterile place, so if you can do something along those lines, thank you.
I have no problem. Okay, my name is Samira Carter. I just turned twenty-one four months ago, and yeah, I've been living on the island since I was born. But the point is, I'm tired of people thinking about Riverwalk, but they're not thinking about the ninety-nine percent who live over here on Harbor Road or Eastwood. I want to know that if you will make the people in Eastwood, where are we going? We're not going anywhere. You're kicking us off. I like how you're, you know, renovating everything with Duane Reade, you're making Japanese restaurants, you're doing all this other stuff, but there's nothing here on Main Street for us. Where's our bakery? Where's our pizzeria? Where's any stuff for us? I mean, the rent's so damn high, nobody can even begin to afford it. And then you're just, you're not thinking about nobody else but yourselves, and thinking about your investment. That's real damn selfish. I'm tired of talking about money, and thinking about your investment, and they're not thinking about how to benefit other people who need to be benefited, okay? Other people deserve a chance, and other people deserve to be heard, okay? Our friends and our families are being affected by what's going on, okay? And we don't deserve that, we honestly don't.
Those of you who would...
Oh, and I'm here to support Trump. I'm, hold on, I'm sorry, I really came here for Trump, and I just got off work. But I don't believe that the restaurant should be closed down, that's like one of our last places to eat. And they're really good. And yeah, Alex deserves all the support he can get.
Ladies and gentlemen, those of you who would want to stay, David has graciously said he would stay and talk with you, but we are done for this evening. Thank you so much for coming here. I hope this was useful for you. I hope that we can move forward to a conclusion that benefits us all. Thank you, David.